Everybody, councilor. Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay. Will the January 8th Dune City Council meeting please come to order? It is 7:05 due to photo opportunities. So, um... Mr. Hillen, may I get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Rebecca Reedy.
Here.
Council President Jamie Mills.
Here.
Councilor Ed Scarborough.
Here.
Councilor Maurice Sanders.
Here.
Councilor Duke Wells.
Here.
And Councilor Sheldon Meyer. President. Thank you.
Whatever, President. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time in our agenda, we are going to take a break from our usual protocol to have the oath of office of newly elected mayor and councilors. So Teresa, do you want us to go down front?
Yeah, remember, do you come down and break my air?
What's the plan? You read her, she reads back?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Do you have a Bible? I guess we don't have a Bible. No, you just raise your hand. They're all dancing a while.
No, no Bible was required.
The President uses a Bible? Okay, what do I do?
Raise your right hand.
Raise your hand.
And you got for me? I even had you a copy of the script for you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You guys stand just a little closer together.
Sure.
Oh, come on, Jamie. Is that good? Okay. For the oath of office for mayor of Dune City, I Rebecca Reedy do solemnly swear that I will uphold and defend...
I Rebecca Reedy do solemnly swear that I will uphold and defend...
The Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon, the Charter and the codes of Dune City, and that I will faithfully perform my duties as mayor to the best of my ability so long as I am in office.
Okay. That I will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon, the Charter and codes of the city of Dune City, and I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor to the best of my ability so long as I am in office.
Congratulations.
Oh, congratulations. Go for it.
Can we have Sheldon Meyer and Duke Wells down?
Down front.
I guess you should slide into the seat.
Oh, yeah.
I'll wait.
Well, we're gonna do state here, Amy.
It's gonna be a long one. I don't wanna wait.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I state her name.
I, Sheldon Meyer.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
The Charter and codes of the city of Dune City.
The Charter and the codes of the city of Dune City.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of city councillor to the best of my ability so long as I am in office.
I will perform and do the duties of city councillor to the best of my ability for as long as I am in office.
We'll get some signatures on it right after.
No backing out now. Okay, thank you. Now everyone remain seated. I'd like to just let everyone know that our newly elected councillor will be sworn in when he's back in town, very likely at our next Dune Council meeting. Could I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please?
Salute. Second.
As we move to second, that we approve tonight's agenda in discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Mayor, I would request that the minutes of the December 11, 2014 meeting be pulled from the consent agenda. I just have one small little correction that I apologize to staff for not getting it from earlier.
We'll put it under all business? All business? Mr. Hillen?
Any word of its pleasure, the council?
Okay. Alright, so I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda minus the minutes of council meeting from December 11.
Salute.
Second. Any questions or discussion?
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Thank you. And any discussion, councilors? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. Let's take up the business of the minutes. Council Mills?
Yes, on page five of nine.
Okay.
The very last word on the page. The sentence reads, "She suggested that the council ask staff to prepare an ARFP so the city has an idea of the cost to hire a certified water master." And I may have said that, but what, if I did, I misspoke. It should be surveyor. Certified water rights surveyor. That's what we needed to hire, not water master.
Water rights surveyor.
Mm-hmm.
Good catch, Jamie.
Very good catch. Okay.
Mayor Reedy, I'm making a motion to approve these minutes as amended.
Second. It's been moved to second that we approve December 11's minutes as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Council Mills. Announcements. The City Council's special session for goal setting, previously scheduled for January 15, from 10 to 2 o'clock, will be rescheduled later in this meeting and we'll take up the discussion of that at that time. Any citizen is requested to present a written comments for this work session since we will not be having public comments during the work session. So please submit your comments ahead of time so that they can be copied and submitted for discussion by the councilors. So, thank you. The Third Annual Oregon Dunes Triathlon and Duathelon is scheduled for May 9, 2015. That's coming right up faster than we know. We're working on a presentation, PowerPoint presentation to basically take around to any group or organization that's interested in seeing and hearing the presentation. And we also, it's probable that we'll use that for solicitation purposes, for sponsorships. So I'll have to see about that. As a special announcement, I'd like to announce that on Monday, January 19, from 5 to 7 p.m., there will be going away reception for Teresa Bayer, who is leaving our community. And she has so generously given up her time to Dune City as well as her staff time and to see that the matters of Dune City have been reported in the newspaper accurately and in good faith. So please join us in celebrating or wishing her well on this as she leaves our community. That's January 19 from 5 to 7 on Bay Street at Spice. Yeah, I know. There's another announcement I'd like, that there's a West Lane Emergency Operations Group, Emergency Management Institute for elected officials. It's regarding... What exactly is it, friend?
They've got two things going on. It's the armed shooters planning event.
Oh, no, no, this is the ICS.
Oh. This is the ICS training in preparation for planning updates to our emergency plan.
Incident Command System.
The course is designed... Read this. "The course is designed as an orientation on the National Incident Management System and the Incident Command System. Executives, administrators, and other policymakers from local state agencies along with those from private organizations should find the information containing in this briefing helpful as they develop strategies for their prospective response groups." Councilors.
Council Mills? May I expand on that a little?
Absolutely.
As the Cyrus Law Valley Fire and Rescue and the West Lane Emergency Operations Group is moving forward with the rewrite and reconsideration of its emergency operations plan, it becomes important for the people to understand how the system's supposed to work from the feds all the way down. And that's what this is. This is the training that tells you, well, this is what the feds do and this is what the states do and this is what cities do so that everybody is working together in an emergency and not trying to conflict with one another and step on each other's toes and cause a lot of problems. So they are encouraging as many individuals who will be participating with creation and writing of the new emergency operations plan to become certified either 100, 200, or 700, or all three, before we get into the throes of all the meetings that will be coming down the pike for the EOP.
I have RSVP'd my intention to attend, so councilors, let us know if you would like to attend. Maury probably had this a million times.
I have 100, 200, 300, 400, 700, 800.
Okay, fine. Thank you. We're covered. Okay. January birthday wishes to Councilor Ed Scarborough on the 19th and Administrator Assistant Laura Lee Lorenson on the 12th. And we do have cake and we're in to celebrate this evening, so please join us immediately after the meeting. Mr. Hillen, is there any citizens signed up for citizen input?
No citizen input.
Alright, thank you. New business nomination and appointment of council president. New business. So once again, we, as a council... Is it every odd year?
Every odd year.
Every odd year, we elect a new council president or re-elect a council president. So I will entertain nominations for council president.
Mayor Reedy, I'd like to nominate Jamie Mills for council president.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we nominate Councilor Jamie Mills as council president. Any discussion? Council Mills?
I would be honored and thank you so much for not forcing Fred to redo the stationery.
That's a common, that's... Didn't even think of that one.
I'll leave nominations be closed. Just here where it will be.
No, that's good. Alright, nominations are now closed. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, unanimous. Thank you, councillor. You've been a big help to me and I really appreciate your service.
Sure, thank you. If you do well, you have a great team here.
Appointment of commissions and committee chairs. You have in your packets, councilors, recommendations why we for council chair appointments. And the first one is council president. We've elected councillor Mills as council president. The second one is councillor Maury Sanders for Road Commission, Communication and Education Commission, excuse me, Committee. Councillor Jamie Mills, Conservation Committee. Then councillor-elect Ken Platt, Ordnance Review Committee, councillor Mills. Parks and Recreation Commission, councillor Ed Scarborough. Water Quality, councillor, you good with that?
Sure.
Okay. Councillor Sheldon Meyer and councillor Duke Wells to continue with the community center. So I will entertain a motion to adopt these as recommended.
Salute. Second.
Any discussion, councilors? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, thank you all. Okay, we have planning commission appointments now. There are two openings and the terms for these openings will end on January 11, 2018. So, three-year terms. The first appointment, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Paul Gargis.
Salute.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Mr. Paul Gargis to the Planning Commission. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the mush. I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Gargis.
Madam Chairman, who is the second on that? Thank you.
Apparently, I need to speak up.
No, I just have wax in my ears, Jamie. Thank you.
Alright. Councilors, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Susie Nevada to the Planning Commission. This subject dies for a lack of emotion. Parks and Recreation?
This is Gary Lapping?
Mr. Gary Lapping has been serving on this committee for a while. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Lapping to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Salute. Second.
Did you get the second? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lapping. Water Quality. And Mr. Dumas has served several years and is asking for a reappointment. I'll entertain a motion to approve Mr. David Dumas to the Water Quality Committee. Second. Any discussion, councilors? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you, Mr. Dumas. That's it? Alright. All business. Unfinished all business. The reschedule of the goal session, you know, after last meeting and we had scheduled the appointment date for the goal planning session, I started thinking, you know, I want, I, we would... The newly elected councillor would not be able to attend. And I just thought that in order to promote cohesiveness and team building of the council, that I really would like to have him present. So I asked our city manager if he would contact Mr. Platt and see, you know, what dates he would be available for that. And so I actually haven't heard a reply on the dates that he's not available.
Yeah, we have not heard back yet. So I think, you know, if we're gonna... If it's the pleasure of the council to still reschedule, we probably need to do it just under, you know, the guise that I will put the date together that works for everybody.
Oh. How do you feel about that, councilors?
I'd like to know what timeframe you're looking at to do this 'cause I, like everyone else, has other commitments. I really need to know.
February.
It would have to be towards the end of February. How does that work?
Yeah, it would have to be the 10th, 17th... No, excuse me, it would have to be the 17th to 24th in battery in February. And it might actually... I'd say it might fit well with a budget meeting.
When is the budget meeting?
It's currently in plan.
So we need to have, what, a quarterly budget meeting?
Yep.
And a goal setting meeting? It's now the...
Well, we're looking at...
April, January?
Does any... How does the second, third week, or the third and fourth week of February look for everybody?
Pretty good.
17th to 24th, that week?
It will be a problem. But it's okay, I can participate by phone at both meetings.
Okay.
Well, wait a minute. What dates are you not available?
I'd rather not discuss that in open session.
Okay. Alright.
Jamie, how about you, Ed? You guys look okay?
I'm fine with that.
I think so, at this point.
Good.
I'd just like to get it over with. Yeah, as soon as possible so that the committees can move forward on the work.
Right.
You can't plan if you don't know what the guidance is from the council, so...
Well...
That's all, I just...
Can we do the budget meeting? Since it's a review of the past year, I mean, I don't know if the newly elected councillor would be outlawed or review of what's passed.
Frankly, a newly elected councillor is not gonna have... Is not only not gonna have their hands around the budgets, they're not gonna have their hands around goals.
This is true. However, it's a good opportunity for them to become acquainted with everything and, you know, get themselves up to speed because it takes...
Yep, I totally agree. The budget question is on me. It's just... When am I gonna be ready?
I think I'm gonna be gone here till Las Vegas.
What do you recommend?
Have you looked at week and second, the night of February? What's the night to attend?
That's better for me.
Yes, yeah, that sounds fine. So 11 or 12?
We've got, we've got five weeks this time.
10, 11, 12?
Yeah, we've got five weeks between city councils. So... So let's pretend if we plan something on the 10th.
The 11:30, 12:00 would call it best.
12, city council.
That's a good day.
Do you want to just do it that day and be done?
Alright.
No?
No. Lane Act is on the 11th morning.
Okay, so the 10th, if we do, it'll need to be after, schedule it like at 1:30?
How about...
Or 2?
2, 3?
On February 10?
Yeah.
How about you, Ed?
Sounds good.
2 o'clock on the 10th?
3 p.m. on February 10?
2, 2 p.m.?
2 p.m.
2, and then we'll be down by 5? Duke? Are you good, Duke?
Hmm?
How about you, Council Meyer?
I'm glad to be you.
No, the, the goal planning session, right?
Yep.
Fred, is that right? The goal planning session?
And I'll try to incorporate a budget overview.
Alright. Okay.
Mechanical hand in hand.
Okay, sure.
Should I, a councillor for the whole budget committee? I mean, I can see where it would be important to the councillors, we're setting goals for this year, to know where we stand financially.
How about for the council and we tell the budget committee they're invited but no input?
It's not a quarterly review.
Not a quarterly review.
Just an update.
Just a briefing, a briefing in preparation for the goal setting.
Yep.
Thank you, councilors.
2?
2 p.m. Probably 2 to 5? Could we attempt to notify...
Ken.
Ken, that, I mean, let's try multiple avenues.
I will.
And to let him know that.
As a comment, is it possible for the city administrator or the municipal office to give a phone or Skype to him and have him sign in and then have the councillor participate by phone?
I just think that's kind of a lot. I think, I really think that if he values his appointment, he'll, you know, be here.
We can actually appoint him as a very first agenda item with that meeting.
Good, good.
Administer his oath of office.
Okay. Are we done with that subject?
Thank you. West Lane Emergency Operations Group? That, I guess, is on me. It was basically my misunderstanding as Maury had suspected it was. We, the board, we long board approved the agreement for the associate members and the associate members are supposed to take it back to their respective boards, so we have not had time.
Alright then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But, you know, I did read that. That's really interesting, of course, always. Alright, so the next agenda item is just, we want to open a discussion about what do we do when sometimes committees go awry and members, you know, aren't committed to their appointments or stuff happens that are extenuating circumstances that are beyond your control. So, Ed, do you have comments about your subject?
No, other than that I had to look back in the minutes to see what I actually said last month. And, yeah, I did want to discuss that. I didn't want to have anything that was an action item for relatable being one at this point. And then reading over the 32.04 removal of members, I mean, it's pretty clear there what it takes to be removed. So I've probably been lax in my duties because I really wasn't aware of this because I've never been in a committee where I've had to worry about someone not showing up. The problem with Parks Committee is with the minimal number of people we have, if two of them don't show up, then we can't have a point, so we don't need them. So at this point, I have a meeting So at this point, I have a meeting on the calendar for next Thursday, 3 o'clock, so I'll get an email out tomorrow to members and really stress that it's important that everyone show up and to let me know, because it, it is frustrating, because my time's involved, there's staff time involved, getting the agendas put together and the minutes, and we still have April meeting minutes to approve. So, you know, that's kind of how far behind we are. Luckily, there's not a whole lot of pressing business right now for the Parks Committee, but like I mentioned last month, Mr. Lapping showed up, he came in early to the fishing trip, and I felt really bad about that, it's gonna be waiting for half an hour, you know, no one showed up. So it just gets frustrating after a while. So one of the things I'm thinking about is maybe we would have more membership interest if we went to a quarterly meeting, so people wouldn't have to stay on, we have to meet every month. And, you know, I'm not sure if that's, would be appropriate under city guidelines, but it really would be nice to get, I think we have two voters still on the Parks Committee.
Yeah, I was thinking, there used to be more members, so it sounds like there's, you know, the...
If we could have a full five members, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt if
Exactly.
Two people could show up, we could sell a forum and do some business.
If three people could conduct business.
Right, and we've done that a couple of times, when the other person showed up. So at this point, it's just kind of a discuss, discussion item, and I can hit my email out to the members and let them prompt them to be here next Thursday.
Okay.
Either that or let us know what their intentions are.
Yeah. Councilor Mills?
I wanted to point out that in our discussion of Chapter 32, when we amended it, it used to say that it was mandatory for committees to meet every month, and at the discussion at that time, we decided that was, not in a lot of cases, not necessary, I mean, totally unnecessary. So that's why the general provisions provide now that the committee will meet at least in February and October each year. And basically, that was February for goal setting, or October for goal setting, and February for setting the goals, because you have to wait until after the city council gives directive. So as far as quarterly, you know, I would say whatever you guys choose to do as a committee would be what works best for you.
And my further thoughts is if you do have any business, I mean, we're not gonna just drum up or think up things to spend money on, because we have money to spend, but, you know, if there's legitimate business to come before the committee, the commission, you know, then have your meeting.
Right.
You know, combining, combining, I mean, I've thought about this before too, but it just doesn't, I can't quite figure the fit of combining committees. So just think about that for a while, you guys, just see if any of them make sense to do that. That's all, that's all the input I have. Anybody else have any input? Someone? No, no one has any. Council, Councilor Mills?
The only thing is I wanted to make a comment for me. I understand your frustration, and that frustration for me goes on to finding people to fill the slots when you have empty slots. It's very hard, and I encourage the residents of Dune City to get involved. It's not like we're asking you to commit a whole lot of time or energy or effort, but, and it's to your advantage to know what's going on, you know, it really is. And you get to know your neighbors, and, you know, sometimes you have a really good time, sometimes it is a lot of hard work, but I strongly encourage people to step forward and volunteer for the committees.
Oh, yeah. Anyone else want to put in a commercial? Because, you know, we're here helping, and we would really like to have you join us. We're really a fun group, and want you to get to know us. And, you know, it truly does produce good for your community, so if you have any inclination at all, giving back yourself for community service, please help us out. That's my commercial. Thank you, Ed. Okay. So we're down to committee reports. I do have our report this evening. Tonight, as I take office on my third term as your mayor, I'd like to offer tribute to those that have supported me throughout this journey. You know, when you start out as mayor, you think, oh, I'm just gonna do this and help out for a little while, then I'll let someone else do it. And then once you get in there, you know, you find that you're making some progress and things are going well, but there's always some unfinished business, so you think, oh, I'll go, you know, one more term, and then one term leads into another term and so on. So I just would like to thank some folks here, so please bear with me this evening. I'd like to thank my wonderful husband, Rick Reedy, who understands when I spend long hours working on projects. I mean, he has to eat Marie Calendar's pot pies, and, you know, just, you know, those sacrifices I really appreciate. I'd like to say thank you to my granddaughter, Andreessen Reedy, who gracefully understands when her game nights fall on city council nights, and I can't be there even though I want to be. I'd like to thank my employer, US Bank, for, and district manager, Michael Smith, and region president, Kevin Lacoste, for understanding that being mayor is a personal mission of giving back to the communities in which we live. I'd like to thank our city manager, Fred Hilden, for his dependable guidance over the years, for his put together an office team that is second to none. Renee, Linda, Laura Lee, and Repunzel, thank you very much for your service. Thank you to Alan Campbell, who always makes us look good on television. I'd like to say thank you to councilors Jamie Mills. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Ed. Thank you for your service and bearing with the committees and all the things that we have to struggle through sometimes. Yeah? Thank you, Maury, for your service, you know, dependable and always there to call upon. Duke, you make our community center look beautiful, and, you know, you fix the little things, you fix things that we don't even know are broken, and, you know, it takes a special talent for that, and I just want to thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. And Sheldon, back with us, going for another term. Thank you, Sheldon, because, you know, we appreciate it. We enjoy having you, your humor is, you know, makes us a fun place to be here, so thank you very much. Thank you all for working so hard to help us accomplish the things that we have, and if you look back, we've accomplished a lot. There's still some unfinished business, but we really have accomplished a lot. And finally, I would like to thank you, the citizens, for re-electing me, to represent you and Dune City as your mayor. I promise that with God's help, I will perform the duties of the office entrusted to me that I said earlier in that oath, in a cheerful, fair, and compassionate manner. The end.
Overpug.
Well...
Couple, yeah, a couple courses.
Fine. There you go, that's my annual, now I've lost the agenda. Thank you, Jamie. All right, communication and education. Councilor Meyer?
I'm passing the baton, and I need to get some up to speed.
Right.
Comments from Jamie, so we're gonna have to spend some time together.
Just some swamp.
Yeah. Appreciate the input.
So ordinance review? Kevin?
Ordinance review. The ordinance review committee did not meet, however, I did prepare an annual report, and it was, it was pointed out to me that there were a number of typos, and I stupidly responded to that email saying, well, don't have it in front of me, let me know what they are. I don't need it now that I figured I've looked at it, so now I know exactly what they are. On this, if you'd like to correct it, the ordinance review committee held nine meetings during the year and volunteered 28 hours. We had no water testing. And it goes on, the accomplishments are there, and they're correct, but it was only nine meetings and 28 hours of volunteer time. And for you, those of you who have committees, if you can track the volunteer time, it's very helpful for grants, as you well know. Maury, I'm sure you do it in the road department too.
Yeah, it's not only helpful for grants, it's mandatory for volunteer time reporting to CIS.
There you go. And generally, when you have a meeting, the recorder is there, and there's timesheets there, right?
Yep.
And members sign in that they were there.
We've been remiss at water quality on that.
And so... Many of that on television.
The water testers need some sort of signup sheet in the, in the office. Thanks.
Okay.
We're working on it, Linda's all over.
Okay, good. Thank you, Linda. She's got it, I can tell.
They're gonna get a clipboard.
Community Center?
Fred, and he is on top of the staff, let me know that it's time for us to replace our pump shed outside, so we're gonna replace that, hopefully this month, get that done.
A what shed?
Pump.
Oh, pump shed.
Water pump.
Water shed.
I thought you said bunk shed.
Maybe I did.
I'm glad I'm not sleeping up there yet.
Did I forget water quality?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. That's okay. Water Quality Committee, thank you.
We set our goals last meeting.
Oh, nice.
And first of all, one important thing is that Jerry Curran has agreed to serve as the water testing scheduler. That doesn't make him, you know, on the committee or anything, it's just he's agreed to take on that task of calling people and putting calendars together and getting everybody together to do it at a particular time.
Okay, that's good.
The goals for the committee for the coming year were, are to successfully continue the water testing program after Mark Chandler leaves, to ensure that all water testing data is preserved safely, backed up sufficiently, and all kept at Dune City, change the Dune City sign to say boat flushing rather than boat washing, develop or obtain a handout or sign at the boat ramp that shows the location of boat washing facilities, keep the Highway 101 barrier as a goal, but put it on the back burner unless an opportunity arises to address the issue, prepare newsletter articles about the importance of riparian areas to drinking water protection and property values, plan and establish a water quality sampling program for Silk Coast Lake that relies on volunteers to take samples off their private docks, prepare harmful algal bloom mitigation grant to be ready to submit to NOAA in 2017, and work with Honeyman State Park toward installation of concrete or rock steps to control erosion at the dive park. The committee suggests that all Dune City committee chairman prepare annual reports summarizing the activities of the committees at the end of the year. The reason behind that, I didn't even realize until the last meeting at Water Quality, apparently volunteer time may be deductible for income tax purposes on private, in, you know, the time and effort and gasoline and whatever that you commit to volunteering, your time may be tax deductible. I didn't know that. And so...
Volunteer expenses are deductible.
Volunteer expenses are deductible. And so we had someone inquire, how many meetings do we have? And I didn't know. And so it would be kind of nice to have, and Bonnie is the one, Bonnie Allen's actually suggested that each committee kind of do just a little quick, like I did, only hopefully it doesn't have as many typos, how many meetings you had and what you accomplished during the year. And that's all, we meet our next meeting, the next meeting is scheduled for January 21st at 3 o'clock, if you need something different.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Mr. Hilden?
Do we, do we know what the status of the algae boom is on Silk Coast Lake? You know, it was pretty bad earlier this week and last week?
Samples were taken, we put them under the microscope after following the last meeting. It looked primarily as, it is an annivina, it's a species of annivina, it's anni, and I wouldn't say the name, but it's spelled this long. And anni is not as likely to become toxic as some of the others might be.
Well, yeah, these weren't toxic, but do we know anything more beyond that? But I, I find myself sitting, I get...
What do you mean by toxic?
They weren't toxic.
Yeah, right, they weren't toxic, yeah.
I find myself getting this information by email, and I don't know exactly what to do with it, Jamie. It would be, and I know you get it.
No, I did not get that. That's something to remember, I don't always get everything.
I probably should submit all that to the council.
I would think so, but everybody, well, we have a protocol, and whatever the protocol says, and I believe it says that, but I'm not sure, I can't remember exactly what the protocol says. We'll work that out.
Yep.
Sounds good. Thank you. Mr. Hilden is gonna give a conservation committee report for a council or...
For Councilor Anderson, yeah. Basically, we had nothing to report this month, we're strong enough on a couple of routine matters.
Okay.
Nothing major.
Question? Yeah, Councilor?
I've had an inquiry as to a tree removal permit. Is that the one that Dick was talking about last month, where you were gonna go out with him?
I went out with him, yes.
And is that the one still in progress?
Just the one that I'm aware of, it's a, it's a tree that is not in the water, but it's where the boat dock is to be built, and there was nothing there that, now there are other trees he wants to take, the owner needs to take down or wants to take down, but they're, they're well back from the water shoreline, it's, it's not an issue. It was just this one tree, and just leaving the stump there, and just, you know, remove the tree so we can build our dock was not a problem, but there was no habitat issue to deal with or...
What, what street was that on, Maury?
Oh, my gosh, for Cloud Nine.
Okay. Oh, not me, yeah, I'm the...
Okay, we'll work that one out.
Yeah, I'll get together with Fred and find out if it's the same one that the person...
If it's that, then there's no issues with it at all.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Councilor Scarborough?
No meeting last month.
Okay. Road Commission, Councilor Sanders?
Just a couple of things, the, the report is pretty well self-explanatory. A couple of things, I moved the meeting of the Road Commission meeting from January 19th, which is the federal holiday from, for Mark Luther King Day. I moved it to January 12th, and then this, this team called the Ducks got themselves into a national championship.
I know.
So now we moved it to January 26th. So we will have a meeting. God willing, we'll have some fun with the duck eyes.
There, there's been a lot of negotiation and rearranging of schedule, like for that day.
Yeah, and the only other thing is that I have two vacancies on the Road Commission. We now need to have three commissioners present in a meeting to have a quorum. Commissioner Curran's term expired, so it's Chris, Chris John, Bill Harris, Richard Palmer, and myself, so we need help, volunteers, we need help. That's it.
Okay, Emergency Services, Councilor Mills?
Oh, yes. Welog had two meetings last month. The first one was the regular session on the 15th, and the minutes are included in your packets tonight. After much discussion, Stacy Burr Consulting was selected as the primary candidate for the EOP, Emergency Operations Plan Services. But there were some, before the official word to be made, we had to get additional information. For that reason, we, they scheduled a special session of the board for Friday, December 19th, to meet with Ms. Burr for further inquiry. And we did do that, we met with her, went over some of the concerns and questions that were raised. She pointed out that she plans to have seven basic meetings and four work sessions here in the area. She will work on resource building from January through March, focus on emergency support function and hazard mitigation in April and May. Recovery actions will be examined in June and July, and she will rewrite the plan beginning in July and hopefully through August. After the draft rewrite is prepared, she anticipates three to five revision sessions and expects to hold tabletop exercises in September. This, she also encourages attendance, she would like to see 80% of the people involved in the EOP process go through, become certified in either 100, 200, or 700. She said it just makes everything smoother in the long run, should we actually have an emergency arise, when people are familiar with the way it's supposed to work. And I really like her, she seems very nice, she's amenable to, the county has agreed to hire and pay for a project manager, so that we will have a project manager overseeing, who will work for Welog, our size, well, for the county, they'll be paid by the county, but work for, for Welog, to oversee what the county, what Stacy is doing, and get, make sure communication is good. Yes, sir.
Are, are you comfortable, Jamie, with the, because as you know, you've filled in for me throughout that whole process, and for that, I want to thank you very much. Are you comfortable that this gal, Stacy, is going to be able to perform at the level that she's being asked to perform at? In other words, I, you know, I don't, I, my concern about a one-person show is it's easy for them to get bogged down in, in a project of this nature, especially a $40,000 project of this nature.
I understand your concern, and, and that was actually discussed at length. She advised us that she already had the basic plan, she already has that written. I guess it's a template that's used, now, the problem with one of the other firms that, that was reported from the tribe, was the other firm that they used that developed the template, that's all they ended up giving them for $25,000, was just the template, and then they had to go back and make it fit. And then they had to go back and make it fit to their. And so, what she's doing is, is starting with the template and making it fit. So I think it will be fine, and there's gonna be plenty of eyes and the oversight from the county employee, and I, I think, I think she'll do fine.
Excellent.
And she seems very knowledgeable.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
First of all, if you go through the WeLog minutes, Lane County Sheriff's Office never shows up. Lynda Cook is the emergency manager for the Lane County Sheriff's Office, who does participate. One of the functions of the emergency operation plan has to do with the law enforcement annex. Who is going to represent law enforcement's viewpoint, perspective from Dune City as well in the county if they're never participated in WeLog? Number one concern. So who is going to represent Dune City's interests and all the other people outside in the unincorporated area for law enforcement and emergency management or the emergency operations plan? That, that's question number one. Question number two is, you mentioned the county is going to be paying for, what offices, is it coming out of Lynda Cook's office?
They have, they were given a grant for their hazard, to rewrite their hazard mitigation plan, and it will be the same person that is rewriting, or the same entity that is rewriting the hazard mitigation plan that will serve as project manager of her EOP rewrite. And these are precisely the concerns that we need to bring up when it's our turn to meet with Stacy. Because she needs to know, and we discussed that at We, at WeLog, too. Like I told the Peace Health guys, like, you know, we may not agree. We, we may need something totally different from what you need. How do we make sure that conflict gets expressed to where it needs to be and, and addressed and resolved?
If there's a meeting with Stacy Burr in the city of Dune City, you as the representative, if you want me to attend, let me know. Because boilerplate is fine, but you, I think one of the fear is that boilerplate doesn't cover the uniqueness of the terrain, response times, you got a bridge, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, and the danger would happen one person is you have nobody saying, oh, you didn't take this. And that's why I offered to go with you to the meeting, because it's maybe, oh, we didn't take it.
Exactly. I would like to see as much participation as possible this time.
Ed, yes, yes, I agree. I concur with what you say. The, I've actually also met with Lynda Cook and Chief Langor and officials from Florence, and I think Lynda Cook has a very good understanding that each community's needs are separate and yet similar. And this is the reason she's hiring this project manager to make sure that individual communities get what they need and have contributed, you know, and been heard. And so, that their plan is a little more individualized. She's hoping to do this throughout the county, having, you know, a bridge, everybody, Dune City, Florence, and have everybody's plan be similar, but yet individualized for each community. And as part of the, you know, team that's worked with the hiring, they, she, Ms. Burr, has, and you restated the fact that she plans to hold workshops here in our community that we can participate with as a group to give input. And, and she desires that, and I, I think, you know, that'll work out well for us because, you know, we on the other side of the river have different needs than those of the Florence residents. So, and then to answer your question, Councilor, I guess we'll just have to take note that we don't have, you know, Dune City law enforcement, other than our city manager, who's the code enforcement officer. But, you know, we will have to look towards that when we attend these meetings and make, you know, special accommodations if we need to. But thank yous very much, because you, you know, have been so, you're so involved in this type of activity already that I really recognize your expertise as valuable to this community. So thank you, yeah.
Thank you. It's, it's my concern, so we have the sheriff's department, and we also have the state police that are integral partners for our safety here. And that's, that's what I'm looking, is to make sure that component's at the table for this plan.
Very good. Anything else, Councilor, yeah?
Stacy Burr will be conducting the training for the 100, 200, and 700. So if you want to get to know her, and we're planning on attending the training anyway.
Very good. Anything else, councilors? Okay, good, all right. So city administrator, recorder, planning staff, report?
Thank you, Mayor. As expected, December permit activity decreased compared to November. Just, even though it's a longer month, it's a smaller month. Lots of things going on. We issued five permits that included one electrical, one mechanical, one remodel, and two new homes compared to five permits issued in December 2013. What's really interesting about it is we not only issued those two new home permits in December, we've issued two remodel, substantial remodel permits this month already. So we're off to a really good year. Work continued on one subdivision application, that's the Montgomery application, and we hope to, they get that wrapped up here shortly. Copies of permits to Lane County and Lane County of Government continue on schedule. We had one neighbor complaint filed in October, and we did have a report of water damage on roadways. Some of it major on the 20th of December. Didn't it just involve our roadways, but lots of roadways? Planning permission finished work on Septic Maintenance Organs Number 203. Their final recommendations were sent to the city administrator and the city attorney for their review. Discussions were held for proposed new language for Chapter 155 regarding accessory buildings. Our accessory building code is a little bit shallow, maybe is one way to put it. It doesn't have a lot of depth, it doesn't have a lot of meat to it. So we're looking at some accessory building code from another location that, that does. Discussions were held for proposed new language for 155 regarding accessory buildings. The new revisions will be sent to the city attorney for review. Chapter 155 will be discussed at the next meeting. We're, we're oh-so-close. I have never felt so close on Chapter 155. It's like we met yesterday morning, and it was all blurred to me for reasons which you can probably all understand. But the questions that were asked by the planning commissioners of the city attorney were really powerful and very meaningful. So it's a good session. We've continued to make sponsorship packets to the prospective sponsors of the Third Annual Oregon Dunes for Athlon and Do Athlon. We've got about 120 days left to this event, and, you know, the only, there's only one way to go with this event, and that's out. So we've got, we've gotta do whatever it takes to make it. Council President Mills's water quality article on the water rights and wells from our Fall Newsletter has created many responses from our residents about their wells and state water rights. And Jamie, my hat's off to you for, for writing that article, because it was done in a manner that was unthreatening and caused people to ask questions. And they weren't afraid to call here and ask those questions. So staff has worked really hard at trying to get them good answers and trying to get good documentation in place on their water rights. As it says, "We're using this information to update our databases and stay compliant with the state of Oregon." The mayor's banquet was held at the community center. It was a great success. Many residents and committee members attended. We met several new residents, and a new volunteer was recruited for one of our committees. I didn't hear if there was any molten wine for that event.
There was.
As you know, December was a particularly difficult month for me. I would like to extend a special thank you to the city council and the staff for all their great support. Thank you.
You're welcome, Fred. Yes. We go to the order, councilors? Where did I start last time? You're good? Jamie?
I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but in my mail, it looks like we got an extension of time. We were granted an extension to the time for permit number 54405. I don't know which one this is. Anyway, it's extended until 2031.
2031! Wow!
So we'll figure out which permit that is. If it's the stor, is it the storage permit? Do you remember, Lynda? I'm not sure the way it reads. I think they come with some reports that they're required to file.
Yeah. Maybe we'll, we'll get a real generous media, a little bit of background report next meeting. Great idea. Yeah, yeah, so, and what the ramifications of that means. So that's good. Councilor Sanders, go to the order.
He said we have birthday cake, so Marie Antoinette's coming to let them eat cake.
Councilor Wells?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all the citizens of Dune City for having faith in me to have lived four years. I look forward to serving.
Awesome.
I look forward to serving also, and I had almost as many as he did.
So.
You got the daughter-in-law.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, gentlemen, ladies, and gentlemen. Councilors? Second, I'm in second. Been moved to second that we adjourned. It is seven minutes after eight.